Any other right?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to call the meeting, or welcome to the March 19th Town Board Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next, our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Jonathan Sherrod from the Kirk of Holly Springs. Thanks for coming, Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor Sears. As always, it's my pleasure to receive an invitation from you to offer the invocation on behalf of the congregation at the Kirk of Holly Springs Presbyterian. We're just up the road, or south, down the road, on the corner of Main and Rogers, and we're looking very much forward to when all of the construction is done and we get to see the beautiful development that's going on.
We're getting there.
Yeah, that's right, absolutely. Tonight, I would like to offer a prayer from our Presbyterian handbook for just such an occasion, so if you will, please join me in prayer. Oh Lord, our sovereign, your glory shines throughout the world. We commend to your merciful care our community here, that we may live securely in peace and may be guided by your providence. Give all in authority, wisdom and strength, to know your will and to do it. Help them remember that, in whatever way they believe they are called, that they are called to serve the people as lovers of truth and justice. In the name of the God who is love and who is justice, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
I remember for adjustment approval of the March 19th, 2019 meeting agenda, Mayor Protam. You there?
Yep. Are there any changes?
Not that we know of. Gina's getting it.
Motion to adopt the March 19th, 2019 meeting agenda with no changes.
Second. Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Host. Motion passed unanimously, thank you. I remember five is a public comment period, I'd ask each speaker to try to keep their comments to three minutes apiece. If someone had said the same thing you did before, somebody else did before, you can also pass two. So I'll call up the open and public hearing, call Patricia Hinton. Thinks she signed up first. Yes, she did. Getting out's a problem.
I'm gonna give you the mic.
No problem. Please repeat your name and address, and then go.
Patricia Hinton, 328 Spring Side Drive, Holly Springs. I'm here to talk about the widening of Holly Springs Road and the impact that it is to the community. We use the word "community" almost like people throw around the word "love" these days. Well, a lot of people don't know, a lot of residents that come to Holly Springs, because it has gotten so many accolades for the best small town, or best city, and all of this, but there's no award for community. This particular part of Holly Springs, which was annexed after Hurricane Fran, is called the St. Mary's Community. The impact that it had on surrounding areas, whether spiritually, economically, socially, and that is being taken away. I understand that the Department of Transportation is making those people move. No, I don't live there anymore, but that's where I grew up, that neighborhood. But what does it say if Holly Springs, if our town of Holly Springs, really doesn't care about our citizens? We can say we're building all of these things, we're growing, but if we're growing while pushing people out that have been here, that helped make it Holly Springs, what does that say about the town of Holly Springs? We can look at data to say, to prove a different point. I work with data all the time, and you can spin data any way you want, but the way that Holly Springs is growing, with the widening of the road and moving people out, we're now pushing out lower-income people. And it then goes into the criteria for those best towns and cities of financial, safety, all of those things, but if people who have been here their whole life can no longer afford to live here and are pushed out, whether it's by zoning laws, by the Department of Transportation, and our town that says we care about our community as a town, that we're not a big city, we are a community, then it's contrary to the message. We're contradicting that message. So I don't know what kind of support the town of Holly Springs can have for those people. I mean, these, like my Uncle Lynn and Phillip, and I mean, we've got some, there are more people here. Yeah, there are some people who are gonna be okay, they're gonna leave, but if we constantly push off the blame, that well, it's not making, it's not us making the move, 'cause I think that's what a lot of them have been hearing. Well, it's the Department of Transportation. Well, they're a part of Holly Springs. So what does that say when Holly Springs is okay with continuously pushing out people? And this is, of course, is not the first area. We're getting rid of communities in Holly Springs and only approving subdivisions. So I can have these emotional pleas and all of that, but I just wanted to show my support and say, what can we do? How can we partner, even if we're no longer living in the community? But that's where we grew up, and we know there's nothing but love there. Like, there's so much love in that community. And so how can, and we as citizens of Town of Holly Springs now, since we were annexed in, how can we work with Town of Holly Springs and Department of Transportation to not move out people who have been here, that made it that kind of community, that attracted people to come in the first place?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole? And again, please come to the podium, repeat your name and address for us, please.
My name is Nicole Burt. Former address, 9725 Holly Springs Road. I am a current resident of 318 West Jones Street in Fuquay. I'm 33 years old, born and raised right there at 9725 Holly Springs Road. Just voicing my piece, I was here at the last meeting, and it was a little disheartening to hear the members here say that they were not aware of the displacement and the different things going on. And it is a tough situation. My parents, who are both on fixed income, both have physical disabilities, are gonna be pushed out. My Uncle Lynn, which I don't know if you guys had seen the story on WRL about Lynn Council, he was hung, he's gonna be pushed out. It's people in this community that have raised children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, personally growing up, my great-grandmother across the street, my grandmother beside me, the oldest woman in the community before she passed was 100-plus. So it's a lot of wisdom that's being pushed out to accommodate a community of Holly Springs liking. As Patricia had stated, just briefly placing on that, with the annexation, we technically still, in the area, it's not Holly Springs. It's the city limits, but it's the Apex address. So in the process of this going on, it's like we've never felt like we were a part of Holly Springs, because it was like we were kind of right there in between. So that's just disheartening, that now with the Department of Transportation coming in and pretty much this eminent domain, you know, we're gonna take this property and do with it as we please, and these are people in the community that have been here, very beneficial gardens, different things of that sort. I had an uncle that did a good majority of the mechanic work. My uncle Mayfield, well, not my uncle, but out of respect, I call him uncle because he is my cousin, but that's just how the community was, well, still is. We look out for one another. So just bringing awareness to the type of people and the influences that have made me the young woman that I am, where when Hurricane Fran came through and we didn't have water, no lights, I wasn't depending on a cellphone device. I went based on what I knew, and that came from a community. As people, a lot of people here would know, my summer job was cutting the grass in the neighborhood. You didn't see girls doing that, but that's what I did, because that's what community does. So just bringing awareness to the influence that has been there, that's gonna be moved out. That's all.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And a person I know, met with a couple times, I see her back in the back. Gabriella EWC.
(Inaudible). Hi. I am Gabrielle. I am also just here on behalf of my community. Creating some context around what's going on right now is a road widening that the DOT is in charge of, which is displacing several people in our community, most of which are elders, and the people who raised us as a village. And I see that language used a lot with the Town of Holly Springs as being a village, and it's communities like ours that gave it that feeling. So it is really disheartening and confusing and scary to think about a large entity like the DOT coming in to displace folks, and not giving you all the information at once, and scattering things, and you're getting information from here, there, and there's several road widening, Holly Springs road widening projects happening also, which I think was a point of confusion for us, because Town of Holly Springs is also widening Holly Springs Road in other areas. And so we can speak to what the DOT is doing, and our need for support in keeping our people together, finding creative solutions to repurpose land in our neighborhood that's not being used, has been one of the things that we've been kind of discussing. But just the show of support, the show of outreach, and the ability to kind of like be willing to show up when we can make time, when we can all make time, because I sat down in a meeting earlier today with engineers with the Town of Holly Springs, and they could only meet me at 4:00 PM, which was a problem. You know, like, everybody can't be here at 4:00 PM, but everybody needs this information. So just finding ways for us to all be together, get the information at the same time, and find solutions together, is really important. And I know this is not an open forum to have a back-and-forth conversation, but I would like to have a conversation with all of you involving the community around how we can work together so you guys can support us, because we need that right now. And, yeah. So please, you guys probably all have my email address at this point, and my phone number and everything. So please use that, and know that our lines are open, but we're waiting to see what the Town of Holly Springs is willing to do for us, so that we can stay together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
And again, when we talked with Gabriella, I'm offering Town Hall for any of you to come down some afternoon, or evening, or whenever you want to do, and we can talk more about this at that point in time. There's some legal issues involved, they get pretty complex, and I think we've talked a little bit about that, but I would like to have the chance to talk again at an open forum meeting, like we talked about, and that offer's on the table. You just tell me what evening or afternoon you want to come down, y'all come down, and we'll have to have a nice chat, okay? But thank you.
If we do that, I think it would have to be, we'd have to announce it plenty of time in advance, because legally it has to be announced to be a public meeting. But I think Gabriella, and I do thank you all for coming, I do want to make sure, you know, we do want, we do want to be there for you, and if we can just have some time to gather our thoughts for us to talk and see, even if it just means giving you names and numbers and other people to meet with, so if you want, who should she get in touch with you about setting up a time?
That was a request.
That we can get together, and we need to talk to our council about the legal part of it, but that'll give, you know, let's just give us maybe, you know, a week or two to get some thoughts together and...
Because what we just saw downstairs was the Holly Springs widening and the impact of properties there, and it had lines with property. Is there a version of that for what's happening around that corner, so we can see where the lines, the town lines are, where the properties are? Is that available?
Right. That's my understanding. There is some detailed mapping that does show exactly where the road would go, and which properties would be impacted, yes.
Would we be able to, could you get, share that to us? That would be great.
All right, again, I'd ask you to contact me with us sometimes, maybe two options, whether it's afternoon, evening, morning, and let me see if I can't work something out for all of us, all of us, okay? Last, but not least, Fana Woodard. Hello. Name and address, please, as usual. Thank you.
My full name is Artrice Lavani Woodard.
All right.
They call me Vani. And I reside at 9700 Holly Springs Road, and I've lived there most of my life. I've had an opportunity to travel all over the world and see some things and live in other places. But when I came home, this St. Mary's, that's home, that's where love is, that's where families know that tomorrow is gonna be a little bit better, because you get to see this one or that one's there. But those things aside, I understand that you really don't have control over what the DOT is doing, what they're saying.
That is correct.
But there are other projects that concern me, and when I understand there's the rezoning of the area to make it commercial, and that is impacting us as well, because some of the people who still have lots that are large enough that they could build at the rear of their lot, and perhaps sell the first part as an easement, we're told that, no, they can't do that, that is no longer an option, because it has been zoned commercially. We're being told different things by different entities, no ones, and sometimes that plays to the end of everybody being defeated, because see, people that were, that had things taken away feel some, you know, feel very negatively towards those who they deemed took it away. And I, you know, I was here before, we were considered part of Holly Springs, and we were Apex, and during that time I had the opportunity to be a part of getting a school down here, because it hadn't been a school. I mean, I went to school in Holly Springs when I was little, and that school is, you know, the building still stands. So my history is a little different in that I was apart for a little while, until things were rezoned for school reasons. Rezoning has always changed our life in some way or another, and now it looks to take everything, because when you begin to rezone and say it's only good for business, you're saying it's no longer good for what we're known for, and that's family. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, we're gonna close the public hearing, or public comments, and then again, please give me a call, give me some dates, we'll talk more. There's a lot of things we got to say to each other, just to see if we can help, okay? It's on you. All right? Gabriella? Thank you. All right. Moving along. Thank you. Agenda IM 6A, oath of office, Latisha Butler, Deputy Town Clerk, please come forward. Wherever you are, there you are. And the oath will be given by our Town Clerk, Linda McKinney.
(Inaudible).
Agenda IM 6B, the oath of office, the annual planning board appointees, and if I would ask, Sean McGrath and Dana Ryback, please come forward. Stick around. You haven't got applause yet. Oh, that's right. Extra time. Now we can applaud. Welcome, and thank you for your service. Agenda IM 7A, and if anybody wants to leave now, you're more than welcome to. Thank you for coming, we'll talk more. We'll wait.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Agenda IM 7A, public hearing, 18DO01, Steeple Chase subdivision, Sean Ryan and Rachel Jones, maybe.
All right. Good evening, everybody. The purpose of this agenda item is to conduct a public hearing to consider a waiver from the Unified Development Ordinance to allow for a waiver of the tree preservation requirements, as well as a waiver of the development standards to allow for a development option subdivision in the R-10 zoning district. So the order for tonight, after the introduction by staff, will be an evidentiary public hearing, and then you would consider the waiver for the tree preservation requirements, as well as the waiver to allow the development option subdivision. The proposed subdivision is known as Steeple Chase, and it's located along Cassholt Road, south of the intersection with Honeycutt Road, which is underneath my mouse here, and north of the intersection of Rouse Road. So this is the property location. In regards to the town's comprehensive plan, this property is designated as suburban residential, which allows up to 2.5 units per acre of residential development. This is the proposed layout of the subdivision. Total of 93 lots is proposed, which is a commitment that was made in the rezoning of this property, that no more than 93 homes would be permitted on the property, and that comes to a gross density of 2.32 units per acre. The minimum lot area provided is 7,500 square feet, as we allow under the development option requirements. The maximum lot area, just over 14,000 square foot, and the average lot area around 8,500 square feet. So the lot waivers that are being requested with the development option, I have a chart here, you can see, under the typical R-10 requirements, our minimum lot area would be 10,000 square feet. The applicant can request to go down to 7,500 square feet, and that is what is being requested tonight. Lot width waivers, typically 70 feet, applicant is requesting to go down to 60 feet, as well as some side yard setbacks. No other lot dimensional waivers are being requested as part of this development option subdivision plan. As part of development options, we do require open space to be dedicated, both developed open space and passive open space. So in a typical subdivision, our ordinance does not require open space, but with development options, in exchange for the smaller lot sizes, open space is required. And so you can see, the applicant is proposing developed open space, and the area is highlighted in pink, so a neighborhood recreation site, as well as a trail that runs through the middle of the property. And the passive open space areas are in the green. This hatched area that you see is the proposed tree revegetation areas, that is their waiver, and I'll discuss that a little bit in the landscaping section. So this is the required landscaping for the project, type A20 perimeter yard around the perimeter of the project, type C75 opaque evergreen type yard along the thoroughfare Cassholt Road, as well as our street trees. And then just going back to the hatch pattern, you can see, this is where the applicant is proposing to revegetate the property. If you recall back during the rezoning, there was a discussion as to the timbering of the property, and whether or not to allow the approval of that rezoning. So the applicant did have a valid timbering plan, and so what they are proposing is to restore the trees that were removed. They would replant this area with a sufficient number of trees to get that canopy back that was taken away from this property. With that, I pass it over to Rachel with engineering to talk about some of the engineering requirements for this project.
Hi, Rachel.
Good evening, everyone. So with this project, as part of the rezoning, there was a commitment to connect to town and public utilities. With the development options plan, they are installing a water main extension that runs the length of the property line and extends up Cassholt Road, and will ultimately connect with existing water main that's shown here on Cassholt Road near the schools. They're also extending a gravity sewer main that will cross an adjacent property, the Holloman property, and ultimately connects with the Stone Want subdivision. And just to note, all of our environmental and stormwater ordinances and environment, or engineering design standards were met with this proposal. For transportation components, with the rezoning, a traffic impact analysis was approved. They did study intersections at Cassholt Road and Avant Ferry Road, Cassholt Road and Honeycutt, and Cassholt and Rouse. They've incorporated the recommendations that were a result of that analysis with this plan. You can see here, they are widening their, along their frontage on Cassholt Road, half of the ultimate cross-section, and part of that work also includes a realignment of Cassholt, and I think Sean's overall site plan showed that a little better. So you can see where the existing road is today in the curve, and this is the proposed alignment. So that should really benefit the traffic in that area. In addition to that, a fee in lieu was identified proportionate to the project's impact at the intersection of Avant Ferry Road and Cassholt Road. There is today a right turn lane that was installed to turn onto Cassholt Road.
Any questions of engineering before you get away? Maybe not. I think we've been there before. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite our planning board representative, Sean McGrath, up to discuss the planning board discussion for this project.
We did have discussion on this one, second time around, after the rezoning request. Most, well, a few of the board members were present for that first rezoning, not everyone. The board vote was 6-1-2, so there were two absent. The dissenting was Mr. Crandall, and his concerns on this project were based on continuation of basically a predominance of residential developments in Holly Springs and not as many commercial, so more along the lines of the... many commercial, so more along the lines of the tax basis concerns for as we continue to go through these. One of the other discussions that we did have centered around, again, something that I've brought up before to the council, and that is, all of these projects residential continue to feed into the main exchanges going into 55, into the bypass, they're, again, adding to an overall contribution. I know each one of these projects, as they go through their TIA's, have a small impact, but collectively, they are starting to have a much larger impact, so, again, asking that we consider to look at those impacts as far as the flyover intersection, you know, at 55, where the hospital's going, and Main Street, Avant Ferry. We did ask about the trees, and I do see that was the one change for the trees. There was concern, obviously, with the two larger trees, that with a large development like this, that, you know, somewhere down the road, those trees may die off, just because of the development in close proximity to them, and what the developer would be willing to do if those two trees did die off down in the future. Other than that, I think the rest of the questions were fairly normal for what we had on the planning board.
6-1?
6-1.
Any questions to Sean? Good?
Yep.
Okay, thanks Sean, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Anything else Sean? A lot of Sean's around today. All right, at this point in time, we will open a public hearing, and I have no one signed up, so we'll close the public hearing. Discussion from the board.
The applicant has prepared a presentation, if you would...
Oh, the applicant, okay, sure.
At this time, I'd invite the applicant up, please.
Good evening, I'm Kurt Blasier with McAdams. We are the civil engineer on the project. Address is 7401 Old Hundred Road in Raleigh, North Carolina. Just want to take a few moments to supplement what Sean and Rachel have already shared about this project. The purpose of my presentation tonight is to provide information on the proposed subdivision located at 5836 Cassholt Road. The location of the property is highlighted on the aerial that you see. The Steeplechase development has been designed in compliance with the development options requirements in the town of Holly Springs UDO. The rezoning of the subject property to R10 CU was approved by the town council on August 21st, 2018, and there were 11 conditions in the approved rezoning, along with providing information about the Steeplechase development. I'll also just discuss how the proposed development meets or exceeds the approved zoning conditions. So this is just an excerpt from the future land use map, and the property is designated as residential, which permits a residential development at a density of 2 to 3.25 dwelling units per acre. And the overall acreage of the property is 42.11 acres, after the dedication of the required right-of-way for the realignment of Cassholt Road, and the set aside for required open space, the total developmental area is 36.05 acres. Development consists of 93 lots that will be developed as single-family residential lots, in compliance with the condition of approval of the rezoning of the properties. Property density of the Steeplechase development, based on the developmental area after right-of-way dedication, open space provision, is 2.57 units per acre. So on the screen now, we've got a breakdown of the zoning requirements that were approved as part of 18REZO2, which approved the rezoning of the subject properties to R10 CU. One of the conditions of approval was that the maximum number of lots permitted on the parcels was 93. The Steeplechase development options plan shows a total of 93 single-family residential lots. The minimum open space to be provided per the approved zoning condition is 15% of the total site, or 6.01 acres, and the Steeplechase development options plan provides 32% of the total site in open space, or 12.87 acres. Per the development options ordinance, half of the required open space must be developed recreation open space, or 2 acres, and the Steeplechase development options plan shows 2.05 acres being provided as developed recreation open space. Another requirement per the approved zoning conditions was that the 2 35-inch oak trees in the southwestern quadrant of the development were required to be preserved, and these trees are shown as being protected on the development options plan. As was spoken about earlier, the subject parcels were previously timbered, so the tree preservation standards, 20% of the total site area are being met through the replanting of new trees throughout the development, and a total of 8.07 acres, or 20% of the development, will be located in reforestation areas. The areas of reforestation are shown in the hatched areas of the development option site plan, as you can see here on this slide. As part of the approval of the development options plan, we are requesting a waiver to allow reforestation to be used to meet the tree preservation standards. The proposed reforestation plan is submitted meets the required findings of fact for the approval of the waiver. Another condition of the zoning was that a 40-foot buffer be provided along the southern property boundary, due to the future land use designation of the properties to the south as neighborhood village center. So you can see that shown here in this table. And so the Steeplechase development option plan shows the installation of a 40-foot landscape buffer along the southern property boundary, as shown here. And as part of the rezoning, the applicant also agreed to provide additional landscaping along the property boundary to the north, and the committed plantings are six-foot evergreen trees planted 12 feet on center. The Steeplechase development options plan shows the installation of the required plant material adjacent to the northern property boundary, shared with an existing residential lot and structure. Once again, as was noted, part of this project is to realign Cassholt Road, as you can see, and this will definitely create a safer condition across our frontage, as the current curvature in the road will definitely be lessened by what we're proposing across our frontage. As stated by staff, the Steeplechase development options plan is in compliance with the requirements of the development options regulations and the approved zoning conditions attached to 18REZO2. We believe that, as designed, the Steeplechase development will be a valuable addition to this area of Holly Springs and the town as a whole. We appreciate your consideration and support of this project. And with that...
Questions Kurt? I had one. Refresh my memory, because I know with this rezoning, the type of housing that's going to be there, just in general, is going to be what? Single level, two level, all kinds?
It's going to be single-family housing, I think, two-story, or ranch style.
That's what I thought.
Ranch style.
Thinking, yeah. Ranch style, okay.
Can you provide more information on the specifics of the reforestation? How that is to occur, milestones, or end result that you expect, and so forth?
Well, the, let me give up to... So we have, there's a 20-foot buffer along the northern and the western, and then there's 20-foot, which turns into a 40-foot along the southern. So, as I stated earlier, yeah, they're going to have different plantings in there. As far as sequencing of that, that will just be in the construction sequence for the project. I don't know how much more specific.
The hatched area, where...
Yes, yeah. So this one? Yes. Yeah, so these hatched areas will all be, yeah, will all be replanted, as far as revegetation. So you can see, we've got the buffer on the west side, the buffer on the north, then we're going to have berms along Cassholt Road, and so the berms will be planted as well.
So... Do we, I guess what I'm asking is, do we, and maybe this might be a question for Sean, the actual reforestation, how does that go about? Is it, what's being planted there? What's the mature height? Is it multi-species? What's, all of, all that good stuff?
Yeah, I spoke about that earlier. Yeah, so that, yeah, so I know specifically along the north, along the north buffer, that we've committed to six-foot evergreen trees planted 12-foot on center, and I know along, you know, this buffer here, as you can see, throughout the berms that are along Cassholt, there's, yeah, there's a variety of different, variety of different plantings, and we could provide, I don't have the specific landscape plan right in front of me, but yeah, that's in the, that's in the development options plan, the specific species, and, yeah.
Hang on just a second, will you? I think Sean has this.
So included in the landscaping plan, I believe it was sheet LS3, if you have the attachments on, in front of you, there was a typical section that they had agreed to that had a planting diagram in it. So that was the typical planting, and then, once they come in for construction drawings, as a condition of approval, we're recommending that they provide us the specifics as to where those trees are going to go. I don't remember the specifics as to the count, but I can pull that up on my iPad and get you that information. But they did have a typical replanting diagram on their landscaping plan, that had minimum sizes and species types. It was a variety of species, and then we had them commit to a minimum size at time of planting as well.
Sean, I have a question.
Yes.
Have you, have you thought of, now that we've had the advisory committee, the tree advisory committee, for several meetings, there's a lot of talent on that group, have you thought about having these kind of plans shared with them, to put from such a pool of talent?
So it's my understanding that that is not something that the tree board has been tasked with at this time, but of course, that would be up to the discretion of the town council. It has not been shared with them.
Right.
Other questions or comments? Been down this road.
I do like the idea of the berm on Cassholt. That's a good addition to the landscaping there, the buffering there.
And that's 20-foot, right?
That's a 50-foot buffer along Cassholt Road, 50 feet wide.
Okay.
50? Thank you. What else?
I'm listening to what Sean said about the traffic. Can somebody summarize real quick what the TIA said on this subdivision?
Try that again. As I mentioned earlier, there were, the three major intersections studied were Cassholt and Rouse Road, Cassholt and Honeycutt Road, and then Cassholt and Avant Ferry Road. The traffic generation from the project is a PM peak around 100, and then the average daily traffic was less than 1,000, it was around 900 vehicles per day. So our typical threshold is around 1,000. So they're kind of on the lower end in that respect. And many of the improvements in that area had been tacked on to Buckhorn Elementary School and Honeycutt subdivision previously, and around the same timeframe. So the recommendations that surfaced from the TIA included that thoroughfare widening, the realignment, and then paying the proportionate fee from the impact of this project for the right turn lane from Avant Ferry Road onto Cassholt Road. Does that help answer your question, or did you have another specific concern?
What was the growth parameters used for that TIA?
The 5%.
5%.
I know, so 5% is our standard. I know some of the projects in this area have used 6%, but I believe this was 5%.
Other questions or comments?
Does this, this does not include any sidewalks, right?
There is sidewalk across their frontage as part of their thoroughfare widening, so along the frontage on Cassholt, and then the internal sidewalk to the project. Unfortunately, currently, the sidewalks, you know, don't connect to a...
Okay, but they're lighting, okay. And attending some of the planning meetings before, where is the lighting? Is there street lighting on here as well?
So there will be street lighting at the preliminary level, it's not shown on the plan. We have a street lighting policy that adheres to Duke and DOT standards. So the applicant at the, after the first or with the first construction drawing review, they will get that street lighting form in their packet to populate, return to staff, and then engineering staff will forward that to Duke Energy. Duke actually does the design for the street lighting on the public right-of-way, and then Duke will submit their street lighting plan to DOT for approval. So it's an iterative process. The town is involved in that process, however, we do not regulate the design parameters of the street lighting itself. We do have some, you know, they listen to our suggestions and feedback, if we think, you know, there's been times where maybe there's street lighting on both sides of the road that are directly across from each other, sometimes they're staggered, there are different scenarios where, you know, they're open to discussion. But that would be shown in the construction drawings.
Who determines when it's a 5% or 6% number used for a TIA?
So the way our policy reads is 5% or historical growth, whichever is greater. So I know with the Lowe's development plan, they used 6%, some of those areas closer to the bypass have been using a greater growth rate.
Would this area, with all of the development going on, wouldn't it warrant a greater growth rate?
That is a very good question. And so with the growth rate, they have also taken into consideration the adjacent approved projects that have come before them, including Buckhorn Elementary, Honeycutt subdivision. So they look at the project impact, you know, what's there today, plus the project impact, plus the 5% annual growth rate, plus the additional projects that have been approved but aren't there today. So it's accumulative, and the growth rate is annual growth, so 5% per year through build-out is what they're looking at. So with that, is a robust estimate of the project as a whole. So it's not just taking into consideration that project, it's looking at that area more holistically.
I think sometimes too, if you use a higher growth rate, the impact will appear less.
It dilutes that.
It's kind of a balancing act.
Okay, exactly.
What else? Anything else for Kirkwise here? Africa? No?
No.
Elsehead? Anything else Sean?
Yes, so I pulled up the proposed tree planting plan from the plan set. They are proposing a mix of evergreen, deciduous, and understory trees. They have not committed to a specific number, but they have said that generally, the trees will be spaced between 10 and 20 feet on center. Deciduous trees will be five feet high at time of planting, and no species will be more than 25% of the overall species planted. So they are proposing a wide variety of different species, both evergreen and deciduous.
Thank you Sean. Again, the public hearing, open and closed, no one signed up. Is there further discussion from the board? If not, we have a motion on the table.
Make findings of fact and approve waiver 18-WAV-32 for UDO Section 7.01-J, require tree preservation to allow tree revegetation areas for 18.5% of the required tree preservation area as listed in agenda packets.
Second. Motion to make the second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously number two.
Motion to make findings of fact and approve the development options plan, number 18DO01. For Steeplechase subdivision is submitted by McAdams, project number PLT-18000, dated 1/21/2019, as listed in agenda packets.
Second.
Motion to make the second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously number, that's it. I thought we had three, no? Thank you, I thought we had three. Two is plenty. I'm excited about the project, I think it's a good one, I like it, I've been out there. Can we have... And we have something that goes along with this, of course. Gen item 7B, public hearing, voluntary annexation A, 18-10. Benny L. and Corona W. Glenn, property owners. I think I see them here. How you doing? I'm doing good, thank you. At this point in time, we have had this voluntary annexation petition in front of us. Is there any questions? Are you going to do this, Gina?
I'll do it.
Go ahead.
So tonight, we have a voluntary annexation petition for the properties that you just saw the development option plan for. And so in conjunction with town policies, this development plan is requesting ultimately to be connected to town water and sewer. Therefore, they are requesting annexation in order to receive such utilities. So tonight, we just need to do a public hearing and then adopt the annexation ordinance. And so, as you're now familiar with this property, it is located here at Casshold Road, just southwest of Honeycutt Road and northwest of Rouse Road. It's about 43 acres. It is satellite annexation, so it is not currently contiguous to the town limits. This area through here, the Stonemont subdivision, is part of our contiguous town limits. So we're getting closer and filling in some holes. It is located within our ETJ and meets all statutory requirements for annexation.
Questions to Gina at this point? No? Sounds good. All right, at this point, then, we will open a public hearing, and again, no one signed up, so we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Go for it, please.
Motion to adopt annexation ordinance A, 18-10, annexing plus or minus 43.21 acres owned by Benny L. Glenn and Corona W. Glenn into the corporate limits of the town of Holly Springs.
Second. Motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Gina. Gen item 7D, public hearing, 18-UDO05, BIANO, UDO text amendment, Sean. And Paul.
First up is actually going to be 19-UDO01 for wireless telecommunications facilities, I believe. Maybe we have them out of order here, actually. We can do that one first. All right, so 7C is the wireless telecommunications facilities, UDO and DPM amendments. Tonight, we are here to consider some amendments to the town's development regulations and requirements, both the unified development ordinance and the development procedure manual. The purpose of us being here is to comply with FCC rulings and House Bill 310 to establish reasonable aesthetic requirements and reduce potential visual impacts of the community for small wireless facilities. This, tonight's order of action, we would hold the public hearing to receive comment on the UDO text amendment, consider a statement of compatibility, and then consider adoption of the UDO amendment as well as adoption of the development procedures manual resolution. So just for some background information, this legal compliance effort is a joint effort from many town departments. I have Paul Allen with me this evening from our town attorney's office, who has really been leading this project, as well as members of our building code department and our engineering department have also been involved in this UDO text amendment to come into compliance with both the FCC order and House Bill 310. House Bill 310 lays out that towns have the ability to adopt some aesthetic standards for the small wireless facilities with a goal of doing that by April 15th, as well as allowing some other standards such as spacing requirements as soon as possible. We've talked frequently about how in North Carolina municipalities really only have the right to regulate things that the state allows them to regulate. So in this chart, you have two columns. One is the legal standard, which is basically what HB 310 laid out that municipalities could and could not do as far as the regulation of small wireless telecommunications facilities. And in the column on the right, you have the response that the town is proposing as part of this ordinance. So the legal requirement allows us to regulate the facilities if we have some reasonable aesthetic requirements, but we must be reasonable and non-discriminatory. And so it's the intent of this UDO text amendment to create reasonable and non-discriminatory standards. The town must allow access to our right-of-ways for these facilities, and this ordinance does that, it allows access to our right-of-ways. We can regulate the aesthetics if they are reasonable and no more burdensome than those applied to other types of infrastructure, so other types of utilities, and they are published in advance. And so we are proposing what we feel are aesthetic requirements that are reasonable that we can publish in advance. And then it establishes some shot clocks for how long the town has to process these permits, as well as some penalties if we do not meet those requirements. And in the adjoining development procedures amendment, we are coming into compliance with the standards that are allowed legally by that house bill. So essentially, what these small wireless facilities are, are there mini cell towers that are found along the roadway. This is an image from one that was installed, I believe it was about a year and a half ago, near the intersection of Sunset Lake Road and Holly Springs Road. And so really, what our ordinance is trying to get at is to reduce the amount of duplicative poles. You can see there are many poles in this area, but a new one was installed for this antenna, as well as establish some reasonable aesthetic requirements. So having the poles match the other poles that are installed, having them match the streetlights, and have the antenna match the pole so it doesn't stand out. So we are proposing kind of a two-tiered, two-tiered system as part of the aesthetic requirements. Our first preference is for co-location of the new antennas on existing poles, light poles, or wireless support structures. So we would give preference to an antenna that is going on an existing light pole or an existing utility pole before having a new pole installed in the right-of-way to help reduce that clutter. We require it to be designed to match the color and style of the existing pole so it doesn't stand out, have cabling inside, as well as be a stealth antenna, and that means a hidden or a camouflaged antenna. And you can see in this image here, most people wouldn't even recognize that this was a small wireless facility on top of the light pole. If that is not able to be done, our next option is for a new facility in the right-of-way. Per the legal requirements, we must allow these poles to be at least 50 feet in height, but we can limit them to 40 feet in height in residential neighborhoods, and that is what we are proposing. We are proposing a separation requirement of 300 feet, as well as aesthetic standards. So colors, the color of the pole should match the existing color of our streetlights, or if it's downtown, those streetlights are black, as well as be of a durable material, so wood poles would not be permitted. And again, it would be a stealth antenna, so it was camouflaged or hidden.
Sean?
Yes.
That picture, so this would be, this represents a 40-foot pole?
I'm not sure of the exact height of the pole, but aesthetically, this is what our ordinance's goal is, is to have it not look like a telephone pole or something like that, more of a pole that would fit, blend in a lot better. But I'm not sure exactly how tall this pole is. A typical streetlight is about 35 feet tall.
And would it be that close to the corner of a road? I mean, is that accurate?
Not likely. This is probably blocking the vision triangle at the intersection. So really, the point of the image is just to give you a visual of what it would aesthetically look like, not necessarily a placement visual. At this time, I'd like to invite our planning board representative to come up and discuss some of the planning board discussion. And following that, I will update you on what staff has been working on since the planning board.
A little again.
I think all of us have the same concern of the planning board, and that's not necessarily the issue with a lot of this being put in public right-of-ways, public uses. So the overall vote was a 2-4-1 with one recusal. So Mr. Maldonie's here tonight, but he was recused from the discussion based on his employment. So two voted in favor, four of us were against, and most of that centered around the residential portion. So something you just asked and mentioned there, in that private residential area, there'd be no other place to put it other than that close to the street, because that residential right-of-way is only five feet along the street side. And so what I did see the staff put in, as far as not being able to restrict where they could do it in residential, that doesn't necessarily square with the House Bill 310. So House Bill 310, Section 160A-400-, or dot 54, actually speaks to being in the right-of-way, and it does not apply when it says it falls outside the right-of-ways of any property other than property zoned exclusively for single-family residential use. So it does call out an exclusion for single-family residential areas in House Bill 310. It further goes on in the use of public right-of-ways in House Bill 160A, or subsection 160A-400-, or dot 55, that says applicants for use in the city right-of-way shall comply with the city's undergrounding requirements prohibiting communication services provided from installing structures in the right-of-ways without proper zoning approval in areas zoned for single-family residential use if those requirements are nondiscriminative, blah, blah, blah. So there is language that mirrors the concern that we had on the planning board that they put into this legislation that talks about concerns for residential areas in single-family residential. And that was our primary concern, was that we just don't have street poles or 40-foot towers going up every 300 feet between every second house. One, there's still a lot of study to be done on public safety for 5G and everything else that's going on, I'm not going to get into that diatribe right now. But this does allow us, in our own UDO, to apply planning restrictions and zoning restrictions in areas that are zoned for residential. Understand the piece of NCDOT given right-of-ways or city streets, all that kind of stuff. It does call out differences for single-family residential right-of-way areas. So I think, and I, from our perspective, from the planning board, the four dissenting, there needs to be something in UDO that reminds everyone that this doesn't apply to single-family residential areas. If they want to do this in single-family residential areas, they're going to have to go through a process to do that. And I did note there was some things from staff saying that other utilities are not required. I do know specifically, having spoken with the AT&amp;T U-verse folks, that they did have to provide notification when they are coming through your personal residential right-of-way. They do have to make that public notification to you, I believe it was 90 days or something, prior to installation, when they're digging through your right-of-way. So there is current rules and regulations to do that. I don't think that we're accurately capturing that in the UDO right now, and that's what most of our disapproval is based on. If that makes sense.
Questions, Sean? Good points. Questions? Thank you. Paul Allen, Assistant Town Attorney.
Assistant. Definitely not Town Attorney, Assistant Town Attorney. If I may just address a couple of the points, then. First of all, is that, so as far as some of the undergrounding requirements that Sean brought up, the FCC order would actually trump those in that case, which would go back to reasonable and non-discriminatory, no more burdensome. And so if there's certain things that we don't apply to other sources of infrastructure like Sean mentioned, then we can't apply it in this case. However, as far as the rest, as far as the notice requirement, then I guess that's something that could be investigated. I was not aware of the other notice application, so. So, once planning board brought their concerns to us, we made the following adjustments that, as Sean mentioned, minimal new pole or co-located antenna height may pose safety concern. That was especially brought up by Van Crandall. And as a requirement, we added into the existing ordinance, as you'll probably find highlighted in red in your agenda packets, is we added a new minimum pole or co-located antenna height of 15 feet to address this safety concern. For new wireless facility providers to provide an advanced public notice, particularly when they're put up in a new pole in a residential area. So what we have for this is that, at the time of approval, we can coordinate between coding to Scott with GIS to implement almost nodes on a map, which then can be put on the town website, so that way we are providing a form of public notice as to where these facilities are going to be located and where they, where those sites will be. And that public notice indicates information on what frequencies and at what strength, which was brought up, and that is an area that we are not able to regulate in the area law. And that was called out specifically in the FCC order. So with that, I guess we'll open up the public hearing.
Okay, at this point in time, we'll open a public hearing, but there are other issues, like we're going to continue, am I correct? Let's continue the public hearing, Sean?
That is the next gen item.
Yeah. But in the meantime, is there questions or comments from either of the gentlemen on what they've heard so far?
We're not continuing that one, Mayor. I don't think we're continuing this one, that's the, that's the next item.
We're good? So again, we open and close public hearing because no one signed up. So at this point in time, I think all we have to do, correct me if I'm wrong, is to make a motion to continue the public hearing to April 2nd, is that still correct?
That's the next item, not this one.
I'm sorry?
That's not this item. That's right, this one is up for the motion to adopt the UDO amendment.
Okay, I've got one missing, okay.
So we have, we can have discussion now?
Exactly.
Is there a timeframe where this has to be passed? April 15th?
So, no, I mean, right now, it's, anybody can come in and put in an application for one of the ugly poles, and we would have to grant it because we don't have any regulation on it. So it, you know, it's just a matter of getting the regulation for the aesthetic purposes.
So the approval is done at the application level downstairs, not with us? The approval level?
That's correct, that's correct.
The reason I was asking is I think having the planning board come up with so many comments, would there be time to go back and see if you can get them to be favorable with this before it comes before us?
Absolutely. Yeah, you just run the risk of another ugly pole getting deployed.
Someone coming in.
How often does that happen?
We have two in town right now, and I don't think 5G's been deployed at all, so, you know. So once 5G gets deployed, I think we're going to see a lot of these.
So when is, what is that?
I don't know.
So not next week, but we can have a month, we have a month?
I think so, yeah. I don't think you're going to get 1,000.
Unless there's a bunch of people listening tonight, and before we make this decision, they decide to try to get the applications in.
Some of the older poles that are out there, they're going to decommission. What rights do we have for them to take down the old?
So, House Bill 310 does allow us to, in our ordinance, require removal once it's, you're not, you've abandoned it, not used it. That's just a fact problem as far as abandonment. It's like railroad, you saw, you saw a development where the railroad still, that was abandoned 40 years ago, still owns property, so, you know. It's just, it's a, it's sort of a fact problem. They'll just leave them, probably just leave them off, but, you know. Whether or not they were truly abandoned or not, it's just...
I don't want to see poles lined up, you know, one after another, every 100 feet or so.
House Bill 310 was a dismal decision by the General Assembly to cut our authority to regulate these things. So it's, it's not good law, in my opinion. You know, I wish we had a lot more authority to regulate. House Bill 310 took away a lot of our authority to regulate these things in favor of being able to get them up quickly to provide 5G service. And then the FCC order went that much further.
So the old, the old cell towers, the big ones that show up that provide service, does our UDO today, are they by special exception use?
Yes, they are by special exception use.
Can we, or why aren't we considering making the small cell facilities special exception use?
They have to be treated the same as Duke Power putting up a pole.
Yep. Well, if we do that, we wouldn't have the problem we have across the street with those poles in the middle of right-of-way. It's probably cumbersome, I guess, right? I don't know what we're getting into if we require special exception use for utility providers to, you know, pull applications.
Get a response from the General Assembly probably the next day. Take away a lot more authority than you have. I mean, it, you know, Duke, I'm all for pushing the envelope, but to require Duke Power to come here every time they wanted to put up a power pole... it's difficult to get them to respond quickly already, and they just wouldn't do it. They'd go to Jones Street and get a solution.
And with 5G coming, you're going to see more and more of these poles, you know, within the next two to five years, for sure. I mean, not right now, but.
Right, that's my.
Where the technology's going is 5G.
Sure.
I just don't want to see one pole after another, and especially if one's been decommissioned, and they're not taking it down, I mean, we're going to be a city of poles. I'm just trying to avoid that. But with House Bill 310, we're kind of limited in terms of what we say.
So, to clarify, does 310 allow these poles in neighborhoods, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Specifically?
And, you know, and we could look at the issues that Mr. McGrath raised. You know, my suggestion would be that, let's, if we could, go ahead and pass this ordinance, get it on the books. We can always revise it and, you know, give the Planning Board opportunities to tweak it, and, you know, but right now, you've got no aesthetic control requirement whatsoever, so, you know, you can get, tomorrow, we can get 50 applications, I don't, you know, I don't know, you know, so, passing this ordinance doesn't necessarily preclude the Planning Board from coming up with, you know, good solutions to amend and get their comments in, so.
And I've already had, gosh, it was a couple of months ago, if not last year, someone reached out to me about their concerns about 5G.
Everybody wants great cellphone service, but nobody wants a tower in their line of sight. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want one in my backyard or my front yard either, I guess, but everybody wants their phone to work, so.
Yeah, that's right.
It's an interesting balance.
And if I may address one thing, Councilman Berry, too, that you brought up as far as the special exception use, I guess one of our risks there would be being able to abide by that procedure while abiding by the limited shot clocks that we have been opposed upon, both by House Bill 310 and the FCC order, which are very, very limited.
What's the timing of a shot clock?
As far as them putting in a complete submission, as far as all their required documentation, we have to have that reviewed and either approved or denied within 10 days. And then from that period on, we have 45 days to approve or deny them. And the penalty, as it were, if we don't abide by those two things, is they are deemed to be automatically approved. So, if we don't give them an answer within 45 days, our review period, whether it's through a special exception process or just through the administrative process, through town staff, if we don't get an answer to them, then they can come back to us and say, "We're approved."
We could meet three times a week and just review small cell permits. That was a joke, everybody.
Which, by the way, they can come in batches of 25, up to 25.
So, when the Planning Board is, the majority is to not pass something, I do have some concerns that we're not, like, listening to them. Is there a table this until they, we can do like a, really quickly talk to them or something?
I mean, I kind of like Mr. Shifano's idea. I think we've got to get something on the books so we have something, maybe it's safer. I mean, but like the earlier discussion, I don't think we, the risk that we're going to have 50 of these pop up in the next month is probably relatively limited. But I'm open to either tabling it or passing what we have, and then adding a third motion to send it back to the Planning Board for further review and discussion with staff to tweak it and address Mr. McGrath's concerns and the points that he raised.
I like that, just because it shows, I mean, we use their expertise to help guide us, and I think it's important for us to listen.
Want to table it?
What's the thought?
Well, I'm kind of leaning towards what Councilman Berry said about putting something through, but with that third motion that we can send it back after doing more research.
They can come back in two weeks with another red line of this, and we could approve it again.
But get something.
With added clarification.
On the books to give us a little protection.
Option. Make sense?
Yeah.
Sean, do you think that's a, something viable?
I just want to make sure there's a sense of urgency so the Planning Board knows that we want to have them participate.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I think we, we completely need to explore that a little more.
I can just see one, like, every, you know, every other driveway.
Well, and I have concerns about, so, one could be right beside my house, what's the, the water just coming off of that? You know, all of those health issues.
That was, that was the concern that's.
That's my, right.
The unknown.
So, the consensus is to go ahead and approve both these motions and then?
Add a third.
Add a third. Okay.
So, how would we word that third motion?
Do you want me to make it first?
Go ahead.
Do you want to?
Can we do that, or do we have to pass these first, or can I? Or?
Well, if your third motion is to refer the actual ordinance that's passed.
Right.
Back to, then I should probably pass the ordinance.
Okay. You insist.
All right, so, I'll do the first motion then. Adopt Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment, ordinance to 19-UDO-01 to modify the text of UDO Section 8.01 estimated by the Town of Holly Springs.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes, number two.
Approved Development Procedures Manual Text Amendment Resolution Number 19-11 to modify the text of Section 5.05, UDO Permit Wireless Telecommunications Facilities.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes, number three.
I'll make a motion to refer this ordinance back to the Planning Board for further discussion and refinement with staff as it relates to small cell facility placement within residential neighborhoods.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
When did you get all that?
Thank you. Then his hand was going pretty fast. All right, sorry, I turned the page a little too soon last time. Agenda item 7D, Public Hearing, 18 UDO 05, Biannual UDO Text Amendments. Sean, you're still there.
So, for this agenda item, we are requesting that the council open the public hearing and continue to April 2nd, 2019, to allow staff to refine some of the language that is being proposed.
Any discussion? Motion submitted.
Motion to continue public hearing to April 2nd, 2019, meeting. Second.
Your second?
Yeah, second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Agenda item 8A, Consent Agenda, Mayor Protem.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes, thank you. I remember 10, I just got a couple of things. I have to mention the crosswalk safety every time, and today, I saw for the first time somebody crossing in front of the town hall, and he stopped. And right behind him, a car was beeping its horns to go. I tried to yell, but I don't think they heard me. The other thing is, I think most of you know that the hospital groundbreaking occurred last week. We are looking at, hopefully, 2019, 20 or 21. I'm going to sneak over 21, but whether it's 2000 or 2000, 2021, it was a good groundbreaking, we had a great time, and I think we're on the right track. Very soon, we will get to the point where you don't have to leave Holly Springs unless you want to, and that's one of the good ones. I don't know who said that, so anyway, I'm done, next. Go ahead.
I would like us to spend some time looking at traffic, just as the Planning Board mentioned, looking at what's the impact we have, and should we look at some of the ways we look at TIA? What, is that one of the workshops you had recommended is to do a traffic?
Yeah, I think, I was just going to say, I think a couple of months ago, we had, I don't know whether it was a motion or something, but we had asked that staff look into the thresholds and the growth rates and assumptions related to TIAs.
Yeah, so we do plan to bring that one back, that is on our list.
Is that something that we would invite the Planning Board at the same time? And we learn together?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Sean's saying.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Can learn together, and then I would like.
Oh, yeah, and then everybody's on the same page.
Same page, and we get their input, and, yes.
Et cetera. Anybody else?
Yeah, just two quick things. This past weekend, I coached the Holly Springs rec basketball U-16 boys in Lumberton, and we made it to the Final Four.
Good for you.
Yeah, I cannot believe how many parents and friends came all the way to Lumberton on Saturday and Sunday. It's an hour and 45 minutes.
It's nice.
So, unfortunately, we lost in the Final Four, but the boys played great, and I believe our 11-12 girls team were the state champions.
Oh, wow.
So, we did have some representation, winning the state championship basketball, so congratulations to them. I'm sure they'll be here, I'm sure Tim coaches that would love to be here. The other thing is, I attended this morning at Holly Springs High School. They had a career expo for students to ask questions for government officials, lawyers, as well as law enforcement, and there were a lot of good questions for, from a lot of kids that were looking to, you know, what type of career path that they were looking for, whether it was in, you know, as an attorney, or law enforcement, or what does town council do? So, that was a pretty good event to see all the kids there that were very interested in learning what we do as well. So, that's all I had, busy weekend.
Who else?
I wasn't able to make it on Monday, but a happy belated birthday, Mr. Mayor. Big milestone to the end of the weekend.
Well, we have a new town manager tonight with a new name. We call him Sneaky. He walked me down to his car to see something exciting in his car, and I got stopped at the Holloman Room. And I want to thank you, and you and everybody else who wished me a happy birthday. It was a great day, I think it was, as I recall, and appreciate that. No more birthdays for a while.
So, is it Sneaky McHarrington?
Yes.
He actually fibbed to me.
That's right.
He lied to the mayor.
I lied to the mayor, I did.
No, you didn't lie, you just fibbed.
The workers are different.
Who else?
I just want to touch back on, from public comment, because I came to speak about the 540, the road widening, and I know our, we're very limited on what we can do on all that, it is a DOT project, but I would, I want to lend our support in the way of, like, offering the Holloman Room, if they need a place to meet, or offering names and numbers of who they can call. Just basically give them some guidance on, you know, I think of it, what if that was me? What if that was my, my family? And the domain is really tough one for me, so I, you know, like I said, I know we have to be careful what we do, but I would like to make sure we don't just drop this, that we figure out what we can do, or what we can say, how we can guide them forward.
And make sure, if we understand their questions, make sure that they heard the right information. Because when they're hearing from different people, you're not sure exactly.
Right, right.
Sorry, and, and you're, tell your neighbor, no, you can't do that, when really they could, because, so, yes.
Right, because the DOT may be giving them information, the developers may be giving them information. We've got to be very careful with the information we give, but just even if we just have names, phone numbers, you know, something.
And Mayor, if I could add to that, and I think, you know, with residents that came in tonight, but they're probably not the only ones out there, and given where the alignment will go, I'm sure we'll have some other impacted residents, and so, we've got to be cognizant of that and help, help those residents where we can.
What else? Item number 11, Sneaky, I mean, managers report.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, I won't lie to you this time. I have two items, actually, the first one, a very serious item. I do want to recognize the family of Paul Tidwell, one of our firefighters, who passed away about a little, just about a week ago or so, and a beloved firefighter of our town, and we certainly have the thoughts of their family, his wife Kay, their two young children, and everybody impacted from Paul's death. And want to recognize the fire department who, who have been extremely supportive of Paul and his family, and the love and support that they've expressed, I just want to recognize them, so thank you, Chief.
And the neighboring fire departments.
And the neighboring fire departments, right.
Came over to take over while you could all.
Yeah, Apex, Town of Apex and the Town of Fuquay Arena were very helpful with helping with our coverage during some of the events, so, thank you. The second item, and I'm going to invite Scott Chase to come up as I'm giving a couple introductory comments. The, I think as most of you know, it's common for towns and cities in North Carolina to enact noise ordinances to help regulate the level of noise and/or the reasonableness of noise in their particular jurisdictions. And we, and these ordinances also typically include exceptions, and including exceptions related to construction noise during certain times. Recently, we had a resident that contacted the town about a noise construction concern, and as part of that dialogue, staff did discover a discrepancy in our ordinance and our engineering construction standards. So, tonight, I'm very much viewing this as a technical kind of issue, a technical correction. That's why we didn't have it on a different part of the agenda, that I felt like it was a technical in nature, but I wanted to update you on this with what we would suggest moving forward. And Scott Chase, our Assistant Town Manager, will cover the presentation, and then happy to answer any questions and see if there's any additional guidance or thoughts that you have as we consider moving forward with a technical change, so, Mr. Chase?
All right, thanks, Mr. Harrington. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Thank you. I wanted to share quickly about the issue that Mr. Harrington brought up. We found in, when the, we had a citizen in town that asked about the issue, we found that there were some inconsistencies between two documents in the town that govern noise and the, and construction standards. So, I wanted to, what I'll do at the end of this presentation is circle back around, but I wanted to share with some background and context about the issue related to noise and construction. So, many towns in North Carolina govern noise related to the construction activities, and in Town of Holly Springs, with our, with our construction standards, we outlay 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Friday, and 8:00 AM through 6:00 PM on Saturdays, that you can generate noise related to construction during those timeframes. But outside of those timeframes, per that document, you'd actually have to get a specific permit from engineering to exceed those standards. During this research, it came to our attention that the noise ordinance actually outlays different timeframes and standards for, for noise, and that exception is listed in Section 12-314, where any day of the week, including weekends, it outlines 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM where noise could be generated as a result of construction activities. I want, I want the council to keep in mind one thing, there is actually no prohibition of construction activities outside of those time parameters. What we're saying in both documents is that we're outlining the times where noise could be generated as a result of construction activities, so I want to make that clear, there's not a prohibition of construction outside of those timeframes. We had an opportunity from, that, and I want to thank the engineering department for this, Kendra actually reached out, or engineering staff actually reached out to some surrounding communities, and communities that are, at our size and had development activity. And if you look to the right of the outline here, you'll see stars that are to the side of those. What that indicates in these communities, they do not govern noise, when noise actually can be exceeded every day of the week. And three of these communities, and I outlined those, is Charlotte, Winston-Salem, and Clayton, where there's outlines for time as part of their engineering standards are concerned, but they actually result, they actually relay that to the noise ordinance. So, the noise ordinance picks up those standards for timeframes. So, the example would be if a code enforcement officer or police officer went out on site, and they, there was noise activity, they would reference those construction standards for noise. The noise, the noise standards actually relays it back to the construction standards. So, why is this a problem for, for Holly Springs? Is that between, if, if, for example, a police officer actually went on site, and there was, there was a complaint for noise, and it just, in our case, 6:15, and a lot of understanding is that we have this construction standards at, say, 6:00 PM. But to say it's, for example, 6:15, well, the officer would respond based on the timeframes that are listed in the noise ordinance, and that presents a problem for us on the enforcement side of the house. So, Mr. Harrington relayed to the council tonight, what we're asking for in moving forward is making a technical adjustment to the, to the noise ordinance. And so, at this time, I'll entertain any questions that the councilmen have about the, making a technical amendment to the noise ordinance going forward.
Want to go back a slide?
Yes, yes, sir.
You mean to the other towns?
There you go. All right, comments?
So, you want our suggestions on?
Yes, ma'am.
Times, et cetera.
So, I'm not necessarily for more regulation, but I think we need to be consistent in how we're approaching it, and also make sure we're enforcing what we do have on the books. So, if there's a discrepancy between what's in the engineering guidelines and what's in the ordinance, then I think they should both probably be the same, so that our code enforcement personnel and law enforcement personnel are able to enforce what we're trying to get them to enforce without having an inconsistency. So, I'd probably like to see that technical correction. That way, we're being consistent in what we're trying to achieve here. Just my own opinion.
Just my opinion.
Seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, right?
And Saturday or no?
And eight PM, uh, eight AM to six PM on Saturdays, is that, that's why it's in our engineering standards as of today, so we like to sync those two up where they're consistent.
And not on Sunday?
And Sundays, again, there's not a prohibition on construction, that you just can't generate noise as a result of construction on Sundays, or town holidays for that matter.
And what, and, uh, and Sundays just, do you know why they specifically sense it?
When the construction standards were originally proposed, I guess fifteen years or so ago, it was really around being able to have staff available and in the instance, there was an issue with a waterline break, and so we would have to call staff in on a Sunday, so that's what, one of these, this one that's originally originated from that, and that's why we have the standards.
So we passed a nor, a noise ordinance not too long ago for decibel loudness, does this, do they complement each other?
No, they don't, and frankly, I missed the engineering design standard when we revamped this ordinance a while ago, the, the standard says, "Thou shalt not make any unreasonable noise during those time periods," and that was our old subjective standard, which is unenforceable in courts. So my suggestion would be that we, if, if you wanna limit the construction, which is perfectly fine, let's tie that to a decibel limit, a lower, maybe lower deci, the lowest is fifty-five, um, and that's our evening noise, uh, threshold, so you can, you know, just say you can't make any construction noise greater than fifty-five decibels measured at the prop, and we're very specific on how we measure that noise at the property line, four feet up in the air with a calibrated decimeter, um, and that's about the only thing we can do that's actually gonna hold up in court. You know, that, so, um, we, we can, if you're good with the times that are in the engineering design standard, then we can work the mechanics around how that, how that would work in the noise ordinance, and then I would suggest just having the standard say, "Look to noise ordinance," so that it's not in two places.
What do you think? Makes sense?
I mean, I, I, I hear, actually, I have sometimes hear noise at six forty-five in the morning and, and before the seven AM constructions.
But is that below, that's, it might be below the decibel, and that's what I think we have to really think about, too, is-
Well, and that's why I'm like, you know, they're loud and clear as they work here, so what, what would be my options at six forty-five AM when I'm hearing the cranes and the beeping at the construction that's a block away?
So we, we could have a no noise, um, time period, you know, where, where you, you make absolutely no noise, um, you know, in, in the noise ordinance, you make absolutely no construction noise in that time period. You just wanna make sure that we get the times right on that, otherwise it's an, it's a, it's just an enforcement issue.
Right. So the reason I never said anything is because I live downtown, there's a lot of construction, but the person who, who, like, that was a residential area, so I'm more concerned about what are the rules around the noise so that we don't get a lot of those calls, I'm more concerned about them. I'm not calling because it's six forty-five, but it's like, I'm not sure what, what would I call about? Is it too loud or is it they started before seven in the morning? I'm not, I'm-
Well, if, if they're-
It'd be both, I mean-
Yeah.
Right, in, in that particular case, I think it would be both, it's outside of the, the allowable timeframe-
Timeframe.
And if the decibel were higher than some, you know, um, some performance level as, as suggested by Mr. Shifano, um, then, uh, a police officer would have, uh, the ability to enforce that particular situation.
But it's surprising, we had an issue in Holly Glen a few years back, where we thought it was excessive, and they came out and it was below the threshold, it was-
I think that's the problem with the construction is that you, usually they're not operating that piece of equipment right behind your house, but, you know, three or four hundred yards in, which is still just as irritating as it's just going on and on and going on and on.
You've listened to that too, haven't you?
Yes, so it, it is, you know, I understand the, the need for using the, some sort of sound measuring equipment to-
Yeah.
To have some, some standard, but I, I, I don't think it's gonna be useful at all to limit, you know, noisy construction, especially, you know, eight AM on a Saturday morning or, uh, you know, at any other time when it's usually more peaceful and, and especially with the neighborhoods and the infi- infill development, that's occurring more and more in town.
Yeah, and you have to be realistic, if we, the more we limit the, the hours, the longer it's gonna take.
Well, and that was kind of my rationale, but I guess close to neighborhoods, I think I'm very sensitive to what are things for them. So the decibel, I don't have a, I don't know what fifty-five decibels is, is that the sound of the crane beeping, is that in that range? Probably not, so is that a, a car, car horn, what?
Probably not, I think a lawnmower, your neighbor mowing his lawn is about fifty-five decibels, you know, so it, that's an annoying thing if you hear it all day long, you know, that's-
It's much louder than that, okay. So I'm not looking for no, no noise, 'cause I don't think that's realistic, but are we protecting the neighborhoods enough?
Should we go back to the, uh, chart that has the times on it again? I think that's one of the things we're trying to search for here is, is, the comments I get is always, "It's too early in the morning or too late at night," and this kinda thing, I never hear the decibel comment very, at all, but, uh, would we not wanna try to find out what the, uh, shall I say, options are on the timing and then talk about decibels, which maybe this is important?
I, uh, I think the Monday to Friday, seven AM to six PM is good, and Saturday, eight to six is good. I'd like to say no noise on Sunday and holidays, but, um-
Well, Kerry has, Kerry has no Sundays, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they think they're the only-
And Durham as well.
In Durham, yeah.
As much as I, I don't wanna say be like Kerry, I'd rather be like Kerry in this case, and, and even say Saturday, nine AM.
Yeah.
Eight AM is, at least in my household, is, is pretty early Saturday.
I think, I think the night, I, I know, um, someone had said it in the past, that, um, uh, starting early, especially in the summer months, was better, and they'd end early because it got so hot out, but, but I see Saturday, huh? They don't end early, that's right.
It's hard, I don't know if all the crews work, I think they're only working half-days on Saturday, so I don't know if we're really not thinking through what the key impact is to some of the major construction we have going on.
And to some degree, I mean, it's, I don't wanna make assumptions here, but, I mean, construction activity happens twenty-four, seven, um, in our town and our community, and, um, so I think with these, you know, what we were, what we were trying to do here at, this evening was, you know, I think a technical cleanup that really covers probably two core components, and one is around, you know, so the noise ordinance matches what we've already been communicating to the construction industry through the engineering, uh, standards, and then two, so we can help clarify to law enforcement so there's not a discrepancy, so when they look at the ordinance, it matches and it's easier to enforce.
I knew that.
And of course, if-
Well-
Something major happens like, uh, water main break at two in the morning, something major, that, you know-
Be different.
The jackhammer and stuff is gonna happen, you know, but-
Well, and, and we've had that one construction where there was a special permit given for them to work through the night on the road.
We did.
Knowing if we posted those in a more public way so people would see it, 'cause that was happening, you know, like, those kinda things are other things we could probably work on that would help.
Uh, and just, you have to be ready to say either no noise or noise at a certain decibel limit, you can't continue the engineering standard of no reasonable noise, shall be made.
Can't define it.
So you, you, we have to tie it to something. You know, and you could say, within audible at the property line of a adjacent property owner, um, you know, at all for construction noise during that time period, I think that, you know, if, if, if that's your time period, seven AM to six PM, you know, then you can call the police, the police can just stand at the property line, "Yes, I hear the beep, beep, beep," and it's after six PM, then they can, they can issue a citation. Otherwise, you can't leave it to whether or not the beep, beep, beep is unreasonable or not.
That's what I hear every day.
Right. I think that would be something that could, you know, be woven into the, um, into any adjustments, so.
Since the chief is here, and I know we didn't talk about this, but do you have any comments to add to what we're talking about, 'cause you're the enforcer, if you will? We've talked about this- Then go back and sit down, I'm sorry.
No, I would, I would just, I would just reiterate what, uh, Mr. Shifano said, that, you know, it has to be really clear for us from an enforcement standpoint, so we have an audible limit to work with, and then we have a timeframe to work with that just makes it easier for, from, from an enforcement standpoint, if that makes sense.
I would just be curious, the, the lady that used that issue to us, what was the noise for her? Like, it would, this, this, we would come back and say, "Yes, but it's within the limits, so, so I'm sorry," or, "Actually, that was too loud." I, we don't know what that situation is, right?
Right.
I think she had recommend, she wanted something like nine to four Monday through Friday, you know, it really wasn't reasonable that, but, um, so I'm not sure how, it was the loud noise or was it the consistent noise?
Yeah, I think, I think she might have requested none on the weekends.
That's, yeah, which, which isn't realistic, but-
I can tell you that most of the complaints that, that we address are on the weekends and it's construction, you know, out, outside the, outside the timeframe, some, sometimes during the week, but mostly on the weekends.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
So if it's-
Feel better.
If the, if the council's agreeable, then what, what we'll do is we'll take this feedback back and, um, and work on some language and then bring a technical correction back to you all.
Okay.
Enough?
Yep.